Okay, we are here for the second reading of the Water Waste Board. And, please. Okay, we are here for the second reading of the Water Waste Board. And, please.
Make a motion that, uh, would listen to the second reading by title only, on the water.
There's a motion. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
There's a motion, and there's a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. This is our discussion period. Anything you noticed since last week? Any questions and comments? I've got Bob Estes back with us, Andy's with us. Perry Francis Stevens will be here on June thirteenth. And Patrick Prudential this morning, and I did note his name on the call. Before we do that, can you give a read title on it? Yes, I'm sorry.
Second reading title on it, ordinance emitting Rights for Water Punishment Services for Development Water Department to in Arkansas and for providing other measures relating their treatment.
Does that make a motion to, uh, also to wastewater, like, uh...
You want to go ahead and discuss them at the same time?
If I had, well, actually, my statement is small or simple, it would require a vote of, you know, in order to...
You want to go ahead and ask that, uh, motion to put it on its second reading? The, uh, that we just read, the, uh, question mark? So, go ahead and motion the second, put the question mark, uh, second reading. I want to motion the question mark, water on the second reading, please.
Second.
Any motion in second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This one?
Second reading title on it, and ordinance emitting Ordinance Number 1951 received in Arkansas changing rights for services for wastewater system and other matters relating their treatment.
Thank you. I, uh, thank you. I talked to several, several people, and I've yet to have anyone just outright say, "No, I'm against the petition." I mean, most folks don't understand the cost of doing business. But, uh, I would like to request, uh, to get a list of what I'm calling just absolute priorities from each department of what, I say, what we absolutely have to get done. And, within a timely factor, that would not involve the State Department or the Health Department or any other agency giving Bob and trying to dictate out of, uh, fifth or something like that. And, uh, people have asked me to, uh, we're not, uh, to be sure. I mean, we're, uh, we know everything about financial, we've not been given financial advice or anything like that. I imply that, uh, Mayor Van or anybody else in the parts or anything like that, just like to have a, be a little bit more informed or fully informed beforehand before we make a final decision. And we would have to, uh, based on what I want to say, it's kind of basically what I've heard and I, I believe, and, I mean, doing everything we can. I don't, I don't see anything, nor have I heard of any implications of anything extravagant or, or, uh, or otherwise, you know? I would like to be as true enough and accurate as I can, all files that we've got, and then look at it, uh...
I could follow up. I agree with Mr. Lewis. I have a couple of questions regarding the two thousand nine sewer improvements that we passed and were unable to complete due to the financial condition of the city. There are five particular areas that combined total over two million dollars. And, Russell, you might want to, I know the wastewater sewer west side interceptor report that put that on the back burner. And the highway seventy-nine collector, we got that completed. But we did not extend it as far north to do the fifth item that would have eliminated the Azalea pump station.
Uh, really no way extending a seventy-nine, no project to get Azalea. What Azalea was counting on was the extension on Morning Springs Road up to the new nursing home, running from it was, uh, that fell through. And when it fell through, that eliminated the possibility of going from Azalea over to Morning Springs.
Um, I know the Part Two lift station, uh, currently by it was like it's in excellent shape, the county road thirteen sewer collection, is that completed?
It's completed. Along with that Part Two lift station, it was also forced made, it was replaced, uh, we went from, uh, trans that forced made to the two D six. That was included on Part Two, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Of course, part of, of this, what we're discussing, the new great water increase would allow us, let me back up. Our current financial situation would allow us to basically have the funds to complete the, I would say, at this point, it was one point three million. And I understand we have one million that we, we, if we do not raise rates, based on the rates that we raised in January, that we have as well coming bonds that are available to fund. Is it just a million or what? And it sounds like that nine's more than that as well.
There's, there's about three hundred thousand left over from the first bond sale that's going to go towards this project as well.
Okay. And a couple of things I'd like to mention, and I don't know, I speak to everybody here, there are two things that, that we would really not like to do, one of which is raise water rates for residential in, in particular. And then, secondly, we don't want to have an administrative board primarily come in and take over our water and wastewater departments. So, a lot of the numbers that we discussed were based on a lot of assumptions because we don't know whether we're going to have a wet or dry summer, or a wet or dry winter. And, of course, that's going to have a significant impact on our, on our revenue stream. We don't have any real numbers, other than knowing we have a twelve percent increase. I was wondering if we could come up with some kind of a compromise that we perhaps, or something that we could discuss that would be, have less impact on our residential customers. And what I would like to do, per se, if we possibly could, is to postpone the west side interceptor for the time being. I know we're at ninety-five percent capacity on the pump station there at, uh, Weston Mercy, and that's another problem, if we had some plant coming in and everything. But we've already postponed it once before. And maybe shift the money around that we need there to take care of the imminent needs that we have at the wastewater plant regarding the, uh, belt press and the sludge drive, since we have a little bit left over, and it sounds likely to get pretty close to doing that. Another item going into the water department, and by the way, I want to thank you guys. You guys have done great work, and Bob, all the number crunching you've done. The one item in the, uh, funds for capital improvements that the council has been contributing to, the very last line item is a note payment over clarifiers and towers painting, I understand. And I don't know that the entire council, I know the finance committee was aware that we were going to have to borrow an additional five or six hundred thousand dollars on a short-term note in order to pay for these, which I consider imminent repairs too, because, you know, we've all seen pictures of the rust and build up, and it's only going to get worse on the big, huge tanks. So, any of that five or six hundred that we're going to be scheduled to pay, a hundred and eighty thousand, what all besides the, I know the, the big clarifier, metal clarifier at the water treatment facility was going to, to put paint and, uh, the tower, I'm not sure where that is, or is that...
Door street.
Okay. And then, did Russell have some other, or was all that going to the water side?
Uh, it's my understanding, all of that is designated for, including on, on the water side.
Okay. And, and I'm, and what I'm proposing here, like I said, it's, it's similar compromise, and I don't know if anybody but me is interested in this. What I'd like to see us do is to, uh, retain the rates as we had approved, uh, in January of oh-one for our residential customers. I'd like to remove the tiered classification for our larger customers as is in this new ordinance. I would, could only believe, and I haven't really crunched the numbers to it, that that would allow enough cash flow to help, hopefully service completely the loan that we're going to need to do for these, what I call imminent repairs in the water department. And, um, this would, of course, uh, pretty much eliminate a rate increase for residential individuals. And Bob, you might know more, and Robert, I don't know if, our large customers, are we talking about a significant amount, if they were...
No, I, I went ahead and done a, let me go ahead and speak, please. I, I did a spreadsheet, and based, I just pulled up our rural systems that we sell to, which has been, you know, been reduced rate for a while. And based on two thousand ten's sales to them, uh, it would only, if you, the new rate would only generate a hundred and fifty-three thousand more a year.
And that's at two twenty per thousand?
That's it. If, no, it would, uh, if you raised it from two twenty to two seventy-five, at the, at just a flat rate, it would, uh, only generate a hundred and fifty-three thousand. And, but that's contingent on, you know, Walker, they have two master meters. Walker has wells. They only use us if they have a problem.
Right.
So, you know, if we raise the rates and they decide we don't want to do it, they could drop out, and we wouldn't have that sale, so. Uh, but that's, you know, that's about five thousand dollars there a year. But our two major users, we, you know, you're looking at a little less than a hundred and fifty thousand, so, you know, you'll generate quite a bit of money, but not enough to do any kind of repairs that we have, so.
But it would service the debt, the loan that we're talking about?
I think we had a hundred and eighty figured for that.
That might have been at the end of the year, too.
Yeah.
Would those two particular items keep the administration or the state administrative board from coming in and taking over our operations?
Water, well, you know, it's, uh, it's two clarifiers and a elevated storage. You know, and the prices I'm looking at, that we're figuring right now, were figures we had from last year. And it was four hundred thousand, uh, four hundred and twenty-five thousand to repaint the joint tank, just the outside. And both clarifiers, uh, we had an estimate from a paint contractor, and it was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So, you know, we're looking at plus six hundred thousand dollars. And it's my understanding, I think all we can go is five a year on, Bob, can we only go five years on, something like that?
That's, that, that was what I was told. Now, I don't, I don't have that.
That's true.
I just had it right, Ronnie, if you want to know, so we go five years.
But, you know, once you get out, you know, that's, that's been a year, so I'm not sure how close those figures are now, but, um, but there are other problems that we have, that we have to place our theaters, you know, if they go out, we're out of compliance. That was just painting, is all it was.
I was just trying to come up with what limited resources I had, some kind of compromise where we didn't, don't have to go back and ask decisions for additional rate fees this year. And I know that we would probably be forced to in two thousand twelve, because we're going to have these other things. But, like I said, the two things that concern me, one, I don't really want to raise rates to our residential customers this time, and two, I absolutely do not want somebody to step in and set our rates for us, they will be significantly higher than what we're considering. That's all.
But we have, I'm sorry, but you got, uh, one point I'd like to make is, if you pass it next month, you're still looking probably, you know, a good year before you see those funds come available. So, if you put it off a year, you're actually putting it off for two years from today, because you have to generate those funds.
I would tend to, uh, give the, just right by, uh, the people, what I probably do are very much opposed of, 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 but how, how close are we to getting out of compliance in, in the water plant? I mean, can the, the fact that it's rusty, is that out of compliance?
Well, no, it's like I explained to you, if we blow a hole, you know, one of those bad rust spots blows a hole in it, you know, we're out of compliance because we're filtering more of a, uh, clarifiers on Zion filter, two hundred, two and a half million gallons of that. And that's, all those holes that was in those troughs, or that allows that much water. If you, you get more penetration, that's more water coming out of there, so you're actually, you're overloading your clarifier, which would be overloading your filters, and it puts you right out of compliance right there. So then you have to shut down to do repairs, and if that happens in middle summertime, we'll be in a world of hurt, so.
Do, do we know how big the rust is?
No. And I couldn't tell you, it could be tomorrow, it could be two years now. You know, I, I just see it's...
Do we have any way of determining how big they are?
Well, you could get somebody, you know, you could get a contract to come in, but really until you start sandblasting, you don't know if it's going to blow a hole or not, and do it thick, and so they'd have to scrape it out. But once you scrape it, then you're having to, you have to go in and patch it thin, and... But you can't just go out and look at it and say, "Okay, they'll do it for a year," you know, that's, that's something I couldn't answer, but...
What I'm, what I'm hearing is that a lot of people are here or say that we're afraid of, of them coming in and taking over and stuff. To me, I, I, I think that's, that's real fear, and, you know, I'm, I'm not quite convinced that this is bad as, as, as we make it seem, or, or, as it comes out.
Well, it's really not that they'll come in and take over. They'll come in, and they'll go through your financials, and go through your things, and they will set a rate that you generate enough to operate and put reserves back. You know, we're, we're settling it...
What was the call when they do that?
Sorry?
Just getting out of compliance, causing them to do that, if, if, if the rust, the hole in the, uh, reservoir, would that cause them to come in and, and take control?
Now, once you go out of compliance, I, I know on the water side, I'm not sure on the wastewater, but once you go out of compliance, you have forty-five days to submit a letter back and an action plan, and say when you will have everything repaired and back in compliance, uh, within forty-five days. And then you have to give them a plan, and forever, you know, and forever, from that date on out, if you're out of compliance, you know, you could go, the city could go into boil order. You know, that means everything you drink, you have to be boiled. And if you don't follow that compliance, then you'll be fine, you know, so much per day until you get in compliance, so. Without any financial reserves to fall back on, then you're in here trying to do a, you know, do a fast reading, get the rates passed, and then generate money, so. You know, it all depends on how major it would be. You know, it could be a minor deal, or it could be a major deal, so.
Does anybody want to check it?
Check it.
You know, it's a very, of, of, it wasn't...
You could have three painters come in there, and they can probably all give you different things. Nobody's going to commit to any things, so. And if, uh, feeders, you know, we have one feeder that, that's a fifty thousand dollar item, I need to replace. See, if it goes out, the water plant's out until it get replaced, and, you know, you're looking at six to eight weeks to get it in here, and then you have to just might put it in. I mean, it's a major, major ordeal for that, so. And you can have a water plant out, out, you know, completely out for that long a period of time, so. You know, we only have one. If it puts you out, you know, in two months, if you had it, that happens during the peak of the summer, you know, we'll have to go on restricted water use till we get everything fixed back, and then you're cutting yourself, because you're not selling any water plants, so.
Well, yeah, I, to me, I, I'm sitting here listening to this, and I'm looking back, and I know on my two thousand ten audit, if you look at the state and the cash flows, it shows that your rates in two thousand ten generated a surplus of thirteen thousand dollars for improvements. And that's it. Now, you have a new rate going to affect January one of eleven, and that's going to take care of your bond, the new bond payment that we're anticipating, but it's not going to generate any more money to, to handle the needs of your plant. And the system's been able to get along the last twenty years because it had, you know, in terms of everything else, a relatively new facility. Just like our hospital right now is not spending a lot on repairs and maintenance with a brand-new facility, and they probably won't for ten years. But twenty years from now, they're going to have to spend some money, and that's where the water system is today. You, you've got things that you've got to replace, you've got to update, and just from a financial position, uh, you know, you could, you could blow two, three hundred thousand dollars on a repair three years from now, but if you've just done some improvements now, you wouldn't have to make. And, 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 you know, it just, financially, you are just squeaking by. There, there's no, no room for any error, and, you know, that's just not good fiscal policy.
I have a question to you.
Yeah.
How, how much, um, how much income will the new rates bring over the amount to cover the two million dollar amount?
The two million dollar bond, it will bring about four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and sixty thousand is what we're projecting. It'll bring enough to cover the four hundred, uh, fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars of funds for capital improvements that we're projecting are needed each year. Plus, there would be an excess then of, uh, let's see, I, it's been a while, I think it'd be another three hundred thousand, which would give you some room to, to, to accumulate funds to get on a fiscally sound basis.
Here, Dan, you're speaking on an average year, if we had a wet summer, that would rather be drastically reduced. If you have... I mean, I, I understand, uh, nobody wants to raise rates. I mean, I know this amount is so minor, uh, compared to when you factor in gasoline and groceries, and everything else is, you know, going up, it makes a difference. You know, this little amount that we're talking, five or six dollars a month, one or two dollars in load usage, it all adds up, but I don't want to be living on the edge with our water department, sewer department having these problems that we're worried about, we're going to have money to fix. That's my problem.
Tristan? Again, if you had, if we were sitting here twenty years ago, I wouldn't be recommending this, because you wouldn't, you, I mean, if, when you've got a new plant, you don't have to anticipate problems coming up like this. But we're not there.
And, and I can understand that, but, but, you know, the people that I've talked to in, in my work, you know, having a heart for, for them too, you know, and they just understand why, just that rate is a twelve percent, and you want to know what, eighteen percent. I, I would prefer if there was some way we could do it, we could, uh, bring it down some, I forgot a way to bring it down some. I, I, I noticed where Robert makes a note that you were changing the larger water meters, and that made, it's a significant amount of difference. Have you changed all of the larger water meters?
No, sir. We had, I have got seventy-five on the list, and I've only changed thirty-five out.
How, how much of an impact did that make?
It's, uh, it, it has an impact, but our problem is, is, like I said, last week, is, you know, we're recouping some revenue there that we've been losing, and that's on water and wastewater. On, on some of these, some of these are outside, it doesn't have sewer charts on there, so they're not benefiting that. But the problem is, our sales are steadily going down, so we're, we're, we're recouping a lot of our lost revenue, but our total sales are going down, and our expenses are going up, so that's, that's the problem we're having, is we're not bringing in the revenue that we were, uh, because of our total water sales. People's not using water now as much, industry's cut back, so that's what we're losing. But we still have the, we still have about the same bills, if not more now, because everything's over, uh, we still have the bond payments we have to pay, you know, we're still paying for stuff we improved ten years ago, so. And, and I was just looking, now, we, uh, Eddie worked on some stuff here for the council meeting, and back in nineteen ninety-eight, and just on the water, in nineteen ninety-eight, our base, base water was six, six dollars. Thirteen years later, we're just asking to go to ten dollars. So, I mean, we just have been keeping up. In thirteen years, you're only going to go up four dollars on your base, you know, and we're not even keeping up with the cost of everything, so.
But what, what other kind of change would, would, would possibly impact or could be possible, and make up for...
Well, you know, since the first year I was kind of general manager, you know, I, basically, that's the only time I could have control over everything. Like I said, we've been changing out the major meters, and I've, I've, uh, got two six-inch meters I've got to replace now for the housing authority. I've just ordered one, and it's going to run four thousand dollars for one meter. But, by just looking at the, you know, one of, on the fast flow, like, compounds have got a fast flow, a slow flow, it's got a smaller chamber to catch the small flow, bigger one to catch a, a larger flow. Well, pulling up, I've been going back and doing history on all these seventy-five I have, been back since October, fast flow's been showing zero, uh, assumption. Well, it's been stopped, so we're going to change it out. But you're spending four thousand, but we can recoup at least a hundred dollars a month, you know, but I'm pretty sure you're going to recoup four or five hundred dollars a month on that one account. So, you know, we're doing as much as we can, trying to recoup our lost revenue, uh, on the, distribution supplies, I'll just name that one. The last two years, our budget's been seventy thousand dollars on that one line item. Last year was a hundred and seventy thousand. We were a hundred thousand dollars old budget on that one line item, running seventeen thousand dollars a month, average. I'm keeping it down, so far it's running three thousand dollars a month. So, you know, trying to put a thumb on everything and not, you know, get a handhold on a lot of spending, but, you know, that could change in a heartbeat. You know, we could have a, you know, main go out, and replace a block of water line. Well, that could eat that up in a hurry, so. You know, we, on our end, though, we're trying our best to, you know, cut costs as much as we can. I've been on meter readers to make sure we are reading the meters accurately, uh, and, like I said, changed, and all been eliminated overtime. Just having, you know, trying to get our work done, and get out of there on time, so we are doing some cost cutting, but so far this, you know, first quarter this year, we're right there, you know, at break even or still less than recouping money, so.
We got, what, five hundred thousand in reserve now?
I'm not sure where I told you it was in reserve there, but...
You have probably sixty thousand that you can spend, because the five hundred that's in reserve is pledged to the bonds, you've got, you can't touch that. You have, you don't have much in, in reserves at all right now. I mean, you have twelve thirty-one. I'd have to go back and look, and I mean, I don't have all the options yet, but, uh...
I mentioned to Bob, we, we talked, and, um, we still got East North Street project paid for. Now, we hadn't paid for that contract, and that was just about going to come out of our depreciation. We have about a hundred and sixty thousand, and we still like, probably eighty, ninety thousand to finish that project on East North Street, we have to pay. So, you know, we're about, we're about spending all our reserves we can't really have, but we can need it, so.
And you have, you have a hundred, you have, what, at December thirty-first, you had a hundred and thirty-six thousand in, um, operating cash that's available for everyday operations, and, uh...
But then you said we have additional, what, three, uh, three hundred thousand left over, it's just going to be left over?
That's on sewer, then?
That's on, that's on sewer. And that's, but that's got to be pledged to other stuff, that's, you can't just use that. I mean, if, if you had a major blowout in the water system now, you have no funds, I mean, you're going to have to go to the bank and borrow money to pay for it. You, you have no reserves. Uh, you're, I was just going to say, your cash... Uh, you're, I was just gonna say, your cash that you spent in the, for, you spent about two million dollars for goods and services and payments to employees, not counting bond payments, last year. And so you've got about a half a month's reserve right now. I mean, I, I'm telling you, it's just not fiscally sound.
How, how much did, did you have positive, uh, January increase? Did that mean, did you hear me?
That, that's it. That's what I'm saying, you had a hundred and thirty-six thousand.
So the twelve percent didn't really, didn't really get?
Well, no, this is it before all that took place. Now, the twelve percent, I, I don't know what's, you know...
What is that, the twelve percent?
I, I haven't done the, I, I haven't looked at that. I just did the audit through December thirty-first of two thousand ten. And it took...
So we're, so we're basically on numbers prior to it?
Prior to, but the, but the tw- but the percentage increase, see, this is where the system has been flawed. The percentage increase that you enacted in January one was just enough to take care of the bonds that you're going to pass for the million dollars. It doesn't give you any surplus. That rate increase was strictly what it took to service the bonds that you're, that the million dollar bond that, that you've got already ready to go. It doesn't give you any surplus. It doesn't give you any, anything, you know, it doesn't take care of any of your operating woes. It takes care of only the new bond. And that's been the problem, the systemic problem of the system the last ten years. The only increases you've had that I know of are to take care of increased bond payments.
But I, I understand that, but the, the last increase that we had was like twice what we, I think about twice what we normally have and, and, and like I said last time, it was based on, on a wet, based on a wet month and the revenue was low. So the, the percentage was up a lot higher than it normally is. If you know, as it been in the past, is that my right?
The, the rate increase that was enacted in January was based on the two thousand nine consumption and that's... That's, that's right. That's right.
And, and it, it was higher than the, the one of the immediate past, right?
It was higher than the ones in the immediate past because it was necessary to sell the bonds to complement three hundred thousand dollars that we have, sell bonds to complete the West Interceptor. It, it was higher, yes. But, but it was specific for the sale of the additional million dollars in bonds to be able to complete the interceptor project. Now, what effect does that rate have on the, on, on current consumption? I, I don't know that and, and, and Bob numbers don't reflect that. His stock, General Board of 15, the reg manager, that's a hundred and junior.
Is there, in, in the way they look at that, uh, about, I guess about the next meeting of, uh, numbers on, based on the twelve percent increase?
Yeah, we can, we can look at it, see what, uh, if, if that's what y'all wanted to do is to look at what, uh, what we've done so far with twelve percent.
One, one other item that, that happened in two thousand ten that was not included in the rate increase is the loss of sap, which was huge water and wastewater. Since we're talking about the interceptor, uh, we're scheduled to open bids in this room Thursday at two o'clock on the interceptor. As I said, there's three hundred thousand or so available, uh, in the sewer revenues for that project, but it's gonna take a little million in the bonds that are to be sold in the coming weeks to be able to complete that project. And remember, that, that's what the, the rates of January were passed for, is that maybe? What we're talking about now is an additional two day on top of that, please, there's other include.
Sure, and I see a decrease in sap, so it's, shows what water, uh, minus eighteen thousand, sewer minus ten, which is about twenty-eight thousand, that's what it's showing right here.
Right, that was...
Checking cash deeds for twelve months, yeah, that was for two thousand ten, so assuming that's what the law, uh, whatever the decrease in sap is. I asked one other question, believe me, and it's, uh, as I said, is this late comparison sheet, uh, with the Archideck, Lewis, running down Magnolia, down Lexington, is it, it's got Magnolia's, uh, open, the water carrying and closed water and wastewater in the other town, is that just their water or is that included, uh, wastewater?
It's just their water.
Just water?
Just water.
Got any idea what some of their charges are for this wastewater, so?
The book that I get on has, the book I get on has water rates in it.
Robert, I've got a question for you. Uh, you may not, you may have to give me the figures, but I, one of the other meetings you mentioned the average household usage and then the elderly average household usage. Do you still have those figures, uh, amount of water?
Uh, for the cost?
Well, the, the, the amount of thousands.
Well, the, uh, like I got for that rate there, there's a, a book that I can get and it's, uh, the state average consumption on five thousand gallons of water. They're saying an average home is five thousand gallons. But just experience, I know, you know, elderly or, uh, single people like that, they'll use, you know, two thousand, maybe three thousand, but most of them use a thousand, two thousand every month. And sometimes, you know, uh, we have ones that use, you know, a month, month. We, we read the meter, we, uh, you know, if it's, uh, say if it's ten point five, we'll say it's eleven.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, you know, some elderly, they only use a thousand. So some months it may, the, uh, average may fall over, but they show zero consumption. So all they pay is ten dollars.
Chris, I'm asking, and this may not be easy, but Chris, I ask, if we had to go to rate increase, if we could do something, a breaking line below the point to help the elderly? And then, I know there's another tier rating, I understand that might be a problem, but just a question I had, that we, if we had to do a rate increase, could we do something in line, if it's an average two thousand, uh, something at the breaking point and then it goes up? A tier rating that's going up, not going down, of course?
Well, it's like you base, your base, uh, rate every month just about takes care of, of elderly. So like I said, you're getting a thousand gallons with the base. So for ten dollars, you're getting a thousand gallons. So that's, that's basically where you, you, you catch your elderly there, they're just paying the very minimum bill, so.
Yeah, in other words, I, I didn't really catch this until today, correct me if I'm wrong. And Chris, if you just, I mean, the minimum, the water sewer you're being charged today, eighteen dollars total.
Yes, sir.
And it will be twenty, it'd be, uh, twenty, it would be twenty. Twenty more, I had it, I don't know, I had it mine before playing.
The base pays a nine for each.
Water and wastewater, he does, it's really eighteen is what they actually pay.
Yes.
I'm not trying to be hard, I just, I'm like, I'm like, I'm just trying to do it to the least, not the cheapest, but the least.
Elderly, elderly people that use them in their mouth, they'll only see a two dollar a month increase. You know, plus the tax, you know, that's, you're looking at two twenty probably for a person.
Anyway, that's, like, and that's...
Well, I, I would, I would feel, feel better having the numbers based on the, after the twelve percent, because it, it wasn't making sense to me that they should have gone on, on prior to the last increase, you know?
But now, James, we, we, we did do that. We did take into, if, if, on the sheet, we did, we projected the fourteen percent increase in this based on last year's water usage. The fourteen percent increase has only been in effect three months, four months. So, I mean, there's no way that we can, you know, if we had a year's worth of data on it, we could give you a good idea.
You can't base it on the ten numbers plus, plus twelve percent?
Well, we, 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 we've already done that. We did that. That's what, that's what we've done.
That's how we come up with that rate. What we did was we projected the cost for this year with everything in there and used last year's pumpage, and that's what come up to show how much you need to generate per thousand.
With, with that, with, with the increase in, effective January one, projected on two thousand ten's, uh, usage, you were still six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars short of meeting your cash needs that we would project in a year's time.
That's very strong, after the, the rate increase.
After the rate increase, you were, you were still six hundred and nineteen thousand
Is this different from last year, did you call it, and is it?
No, no, what, what that accounts for, see, what I've said, what I've been saying all along, the only thing that rate increase did was cover your bonds. Now, we added another, uh, hundred and twenty thousand dollars in bond payments and we added another, uh, excuse me, just a second, let me take, just, precious, I don't know what I'm talking about. We added another hundred and sixty thousand dollars in bond payments. We covered the two hun- two million that we wanted to get and then we added the four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars needed for capital improvements that the system has not been generating. And that, those two things basically make up the six hundred and nineteen that your, that your current rates are, are short of providing. That's why we need this increase. And see, and, and we went, your actual increase is about a million dollars more. You remember earlier, you talked to me, so it's providing you three hundred thousand dollars of a slush fund, of a, of more money than, to take into consideration the fact that you may have a wet summer, like Gary mentioned, and give you some leeway, get you off of that edge that you've been living on the last ten and fif- ten to twelve years. So we, we have projected it, we have projected fourteen percent increase as best we could based on two thousand ten's figures. Does that answer your question, James?
There's some place where...
Yeah.
Anybody have another question? Uh, we're just wondering if the, the two million on the bond issue, you said, Andy, I heard you saying something before the meeting about, uh, we're gonna use up about one point three out of the...
The, the...
The price, the... Will that get you back into any kind of symptoms or, do you plan?
It will take care of the slush process itself. It will not take care of the rest of the problems.
I'm not believing Mr. Dury goes up, well, I'd like to see where all we really, do y'all have a, uh, when I say y'all, Russell, Robert, whoever have a, a spreadsheet on what you need?
It's in that proposal there.
Yeah, it's, it's in here, I think on page, if you've got this...
I didn't have that page.
Okay, page two shows the, the items that they need on it.
That's what they wish.
But it's, I mean, I get back to my, I mean, is it an absolute, I mean, that's a priority, I'm wondering.
What, what Bob included in on that spreadsheet there, I've turned in for the last four years as priority. That, that point I would like to make, uh, again, it's nothing ridiculous in there, it is to keep the plant in compliance, which, let me add, we are on the radar, as ADQ says. We are on their radar now, where we hadn't been in the past, but we are now. Basically, we're going out of compliance. Why have we gone out of compliance? We have not made the upgrades in the past ten years to keep up with that and the way we should. I'm not being disrespectful, but that's the fact.
I had something, just talking about stuff that just hap- you know, you never know what comes up, is, uh, Saturday I lost scales in our tons of cord, and they went out. They were required by EPA and health department to have those operated. And I had pricing yet, but Russell's got ten thousand in there, he's got the same scales that I have, so I'll, you know, I've gotta spend ten thousand dollars next week. And that's required by EPA and the health department, so. It's just, stuff like that just jumps up, you just never know, so.
And we are a risk water going in, just to your own, so we came up with what, forty thousand that you need to spend and just stuff that's gone out the last thirty days?
The last thirty days, uh, again, the only thing I have in order is one pump. We were right at thirty-five, about ordering that pump, and we live in the next thirteen I don't have any, I mean, I hate to say a rate increase, you know, we've got, gotta have water, so we have to be there when it's hot.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, let, let me close this by saying, pass you out this little sheet here, it's got pump station, cost of Christian Hills, which if we do the west line, that, take that down to zero dollars, pretty much, pretty good, I'd rather be. I want to thank the entire staff of City Hall, the way they poured through this, looked at every, did every nickel. But at the end of the day, I as the mayor, if I don't bring it to the council and to the people, where the people don't know what's going on in their city, that's why we brought this. We're not looking for money to, to go out and squander, we're just trying to keep us a good drinking water and a good way to get rid of it. Again, I encourage the people in the city to contact your council people, let them know how you feel. Contact City Hall, it will be the lag, so, and those books over there are right, and they're long, if you can, you can come and look at it, if you ask us, we're fine. You know, this rate increase is gonna affect me and my family, but we're just gonna have to tighten up, figure out a way, because I figure it's gonna hit me for six dollars and get me sentenced, so I would use a lot of water. I water a lot of grass. But at the end of the day, I agree with what I heard, we must have natural water in the city. And I was sitting here while I was listening, it kinda puts it in, to me, this is how I look at it. I bought a brand new car and I've run it wide open for twenty years. And all along, I should've been doing a little maintenance. And I can assure you, as your mayor, from this point on, we'll be doing a little maintenance issue, and this will come to full charge issue. We will not wait for, we're in a bind to bring this to you. Each year, the water and sewer will be looked at and we will be updated to know where we stand. And, uh, if there's any questions that I can answer after the meeting, or for anybody who wants, I'll gladly do it, my dear, as always. The city council will meet again on June thirteenth, uh, at which time we'll put this on its third and final read. And if there's anything that we can do between now and then, Bob, Istrum is available, Andy is available, uh, Russell and Robert are available. Kerry Smith will be here on the thirteenth, can assure me today, and we will discuss any questions that we might have that's bond related. Is there anything to offer for the city before we adjourn? If not, I'll entertain motion. So, second? So, second, all in favor, uh, all opposed, please adjourn. Thank you all.